Okay.
Okay, should be good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. Public comment, whether on an agenda item or general public comment, is limited up to five minutes per person. Members of the public may participate in the meeting without being physically present by one of the following methods. Okay, hearing no public comment, then we will proceed. For possible action, review and recommendation on a revised RDA historic preservation grant application for 524 Nevada Way.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chairman. The committee reviewed -- am I on?
Yeah.
Okay. The committee reviewed an earlier version of this request at its February 24 meeting, recommending approval of the grant application. However, the only plan provided to the committee at that time was just a single sheet showing the proposed front facade and a partial floor plan, is that's all we had at the time. By the time the request went to the City Council for its March 23 meeting to consider the grant, more detailed plans were available then and were provided to the City Council. And as a result of that more additional information being provided to the City Council, they had questions regarding the eligible items relative to the grant, and they wanted the grant request postponed so that it could come back to the Historic Preservation Committee with those additional plans for review. And you're having this special meeting tonight, as you agreed, just so as not to further hold up the grant process, since your regular meeting would normally be the night after, when this item is scheduled to go back to the City Council. So additional information has been provided in the staff report, and in addition to that, you've got a few handouts before you. Member Davenport had dug up some historic photos for the downtown area. And I'm going to apologize, did I send these to you?
Yes.
Okay, good, I couldn't recall.
Thank you, thanks Blair.
And then a couple other items are that Community Development Director Michael Mays forwarded this request to Northwind Resources, since staff is not expert in the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, and Northwind is. And so they were requested to review the grant application with regard to the Secretary of Interior standards. Unfortunately, there was a bit of a miscommunication. Courtney Mooney thought that based on normal precedent for programs that receive federal or state funding, normally they only look at the exterior. And so that's what Courtney's review is for, is for the exterior of the building. She's been asked to look at the plans in a little more detail, given what they are, to be able to provide information later as to items on the inside, although she stated that normally that's, you know, not under the purview for these kind of things. But for the city's program, it is. The historic preservation grant, you know, definite is the only RDA grant that makes interior work possible. But one of the parameters of the grant is that the items conform to the Secretary of Interior standards, which can be interpreted in different ways, shall we say, by different people, even in historic preservation professionals. Courtney can be available, you know, she's probably watching right now, and so we can call her if you've got any questions for her. The other item that was passed out is that you've got the table in your report that had gone to the, a version of the one that went to the City Council where it listed out the line items. Not that the members here need to be concerned about dollar amounts, per se, that's strictly up to the City Council as to what they choose to fund or not. But given Courtney's report, basically she ended up, in her summary there, determining that the items pertaining to the facade, in terms of the chain moving of the door, you know, and the replacing of the door with a window, et cetera, those kinds of changes would not meet the SOI standards as listed there. However, the other parameter is ADA access. And she told us that normally ADA needs, you know, are considered superior, that they would trump SOI standards. And also when the updated eligibility list was put in the packet, that was as a result of a meeting that staff had with the applicants and Member Davenport, you know, who also has some expertise with these items as well. So certainly she could provide input on that. Though, even though under, if state or federal dollars are being used for work of this nature, you know, as Courtney mentioned, normally ADA trumps these kinds of things, it's still a factor with regard to the city's grant. But the City Council will have that leeway to determine whether or not ADA access is going to be more important in this case than trying to preserve the exact, you know, our existing facade. And unfortunately, our economic development co-ordinator can't be here this evening. So any more technical questions, like I said, I can give Courtney a call if you'd like, you know, or Blair can fill in.
You want to make a, let's open it up for comments. Go ahead, Blair.
Where do I start? Let's see. So, thank you for reaching out to Courtney. She is way more of a expert on architectural history and compliance with SOA standards than I am. So in looking at her proposal, or her, I don't know what she calls it, a recommendation, I guess, and whether it complies with the Secretary of Interior standards, I completely concur with her results. But like you said, she didn't have like the entire story, right, as far as the ADA needs within the building? Is that right, Susan? She didn't see like the interior?
No, she got the same plans that you have before you. And so she understands the rationale for moving the door. It's just that what she explained to staff is that she's not an ADA expert, and she was asked by Michael to review the proposal in terms of, do these items conform to the SOI standards or not? Not whether ADA trumps them or not. She admitted that ADA normally does trump these, but that's not her area of expertise. So she's simply providing her recommendation as to, does the proposed work, you know, meet the Secretary of Interior standards or not?
So based on that, and based on my understanding and of the drawings and the discussion that we had at our meeting, as well as with Alan Stromberg there, who described the purpose of moving the door to its right side of the building location, is to take advantage of the elevation that's there at the sidewalk, and its entrance into the building, and its lack, and then by doing, by putting the door and the accessibility, the ADA accessibility there, rather than in the center of the building, would result in less damage and destruction of the interior of the building, the historic fabric of the interior of the building, specifically the floor. So that's my, I still recommend that. But if Courtney wants to, I guess, weigh in on that, based on more information that comes regarding ADA, then, you know, I would defer to her. But other than that, I completely agree, like I said, with her recommendations. So on top of that, so what else? So then I had some questions before, you know, seeing Courtney's results. Again, having to do with ADA. My understanding of ADA, or the need for, the need for putting in ADA bathrooms is for the public, right?
And employees.
Well, so again, my understanding is, when you want to make something accessible, such as the bathroom, or the doors, or the floors, then you're making it accessible. And so therefore, if ADA bathroom is being put in on the second floor for the purpose of making that ADA accessible, then that floor has to be ADA accessible. So how does the person who needs to get from the first floor get to the ADA bathroom on the second floor?
Well, actually, and applicant can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the tricky part of this site that isn't clear to most people who might review the plans, if you're not used to reviewing plans, is that the building is two-story, but definitely doesn't look it because of a rather substantial grade change between the front along Nevada Way and the back along the alley. So what is referred to as the main level or first level is what you see from Nevada Way, and that's where you enter. But by the time you'll get to the back of the building where the bathrooms are, you're underground. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, because if you go back to the alley, when you see basically what looks like just a plain block wall with a door in it, as I recall now, that view from the alley, that's actually the back of the upper floor. And so that upper floor will be, I believe, accessible from the rear alley, because that's pretty much that grade there, correct?
Yeah.
Or nearly so. So that, that's how that upper floor bathroom becomes accessible, is from the back, the backside of the property.
So what is the stairway to the left in the rear?
I believe that's going downstairs to the main level, though.
Oh.
At the back of the building, you have to go downstairs to get to your main level, that's at street level in Nevada.
So then the second floor bathroom, which isn't really technically a second floor, the rear-ish third bathroom, I'm calling it, is, will be ADA accessible?
Right.
From the back?
From the back, yeah. All three bathrooms will be ADA accessible. There, obviously, there's not going to be an elevator between level one and level two, but people will be able to access level one from the Nevada Wayside, and they'll be able to access level two from the alley side.
Is there going to be parking back there? Or, I mean, like?
Parking in the alley, there's no parking.
Okay, because like if there was a wheelchair, someone in a wheelchair or something that wanted to get in?
It's paved access.
It's paved access, okay.
Paved access to the?
To the rear of the property.
From where?
From Arizona, if you come down the alley, or if you come down the alley from Ash Street.
Is that Ash, or is that?
It's Ash.
Behind the, yeah, behind the coffee cup and everything, that's Ash, I believe, right?
That's Ash, and then the alley.
So Ash, and then there's a alley directly to the right where you go behind Jack's Place and Milo's. And so there's paved access there, but no real parking. And then the nearest parking would be on Ash or on Arizona.
So then somebody who's in a wheelchair could park there and access the back that way?
Correct.
And that might be easier for them at times.
Yeah, there's, there's two, two issues. The first one is that this, the lower level is tiered, there's an 18-inch step from the entry back to where the lower level bathrooms will go, there's an 18-inch grade change that we've got to contend with. And then the second floor will require access from the alley.
Got it, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Uh huh.
So that makes sense to me, then, as far as then all three bathrooms, I guess, should technically be covered by ADA. But that's not really our historic preservation committee's purview, I don't think, as long as it meets SOI standards.
Right. The, I guess what the council wants your input on is, you make a recommendation on the grant, and the items that are eligible for the grant are those that are conform to Secretary of Interior standards. And I guess the, the way I understand the ADA issue relative to this is that the way the grant program is written, on the one hand, it says ADA items are eligible. On the other hand, it says all items are supposed to conform to the Secretary of Interior standards. The issue of the entry from Nevada is one that where these two items appear to conflict with each other. Because making the entry accessible, you know, for ADA purposes, on the one hand is eligible, on the other hand, it pretty much almost necessitates moving that door, which under normal circumstances certainly is not what is ideal. You know, from a strictly Secretary of Interior standard standpoint, you don't want to make those kind of changes to the facade of the building. On the other hand, they are apparently the best way to address ADA access to the building.
Right. And so I guess my understanding of where ADA would fit within perhaps the SOI standards, in this case maybe under number one, in that the property will continue, is, shall be used for its historic purpose or be placed in a new use that requires minimal change to defining characteristics of the building and its site and environment. And the building is going to continue to be used for commercial purposes, and in order for it to continue to be used for commercial purposes, the bathrooms and other features need to be upgraded to meet that, that purpose. And I don't think it's, it's damaging, as far as the bathrooms are concerned, there's, there's no damage to any or degrading of historic defining, or defining historic characteristics of the building when it comes to the bathrooms.
Chair.
Go ahead, Glenn.
I'm not too worried about the inside of the building, because that's not under what we're supposed to be looking at. We're basically supposed to, my understanding is, our main concern is the exterior of the building, from the appearance from the street side, shall we say. And looking at these plans and everything, I'm not seeing a reason, a true reason why we have to relocate the door. I mean, putting the recess in, I can understand that for a slight ramp to get into that first four-inch, four-inch step, or however high it is. At the last meeting, I kind of was under the impression that they want to move it over there, in my mind was because then there's going to be a continuation of a ramp straight on there to go up past that 18-inch, you know, that 18-inch rise of the back half of the building. But look at these newer, new plans and such, I'm not seeing any purpose to move it, except for convenience to the interior. I mean, it's, if you, somebody goes in there in a wheelchair with the proposed plan, they can go straight, or they can go to the left. You leave it in the center, well, you can go straight, left, or right. And I'm just, not seeing a real purpose why the doorway has to be moved. I can understand putting a recess in, you know, to allow them to put a little, you know, a little bit of a ramp to get up that, that short rise and stuff, to meet accessibility to enter the building. But otherwise, that's, I'm not receiving a real solid reason why to move it. And look at the comments from, you know, on, from Northwind, you know, they're not seeing it either, if you look at the very back page. And, you know, I mean, that's, I understand what they're trying to do, but I, you know, we're supposed to try and maintain a little bit of historic appearance of the building. I'm thinking that relocating the doorway from the center to the side is not maintaining that historic. You know, I'm going to guess that, you know, obviously it wasn't, nobody was here in 1932 when they built the building, but I'm pretty much be confident in my thinking that the door was in the center when it was built. And I can go along with the alcove to meet ADA requirements, to get into the building, but I'm not, I'm still not comfortable, I wasn't comfortable at the last meeting, and I'm still not comfortable with relocating the door to the side of the building. Especially now, we're looking at these other plans, because to come in to get to that 18-inch rise and stuff, they've got a ramp, but it's on the complete opposite side of the building from where the entrance is, and it's quite a ways back into the building. So it doesn't come into play at all with where the relocation of the door would be. So again, I'm still, I'm still not comfortable with relocating the door. You know, I mean, I obviously understand the reason for the alcove, and I go along with that for meeting the ADA, putting a slight ramp there to meet, you know, to meet that initial stepover, and possibly putting a wider door in for wheelchair access. But, you know, to do that, and then also to move the door, I think is, you know, kind of stretching the appearance of the historic side of it. So just kind of my thoughts on that. Now, the rest of the stuff, like I say, that's, that's out of our purview, that's up to City Council, whether they want to do this, that, the other thing. ADA bathrooms, again, that's not where I'm concerned, I'm just concerned primarily from what our directives are in, you know, from cities, I, any plans for, you know, any plans for new building, any addition visible to the public right of way. You know, number two under, with, you know, that Section 1127.5, that's, that's where we're supposed to be looking at, and that's what I'm looking at. And that's where, kind of my thoughts on that.
Should, I wonder if we should hear from the project proponent and have them explain why it's more ADA accessible on the side rather than the center?
As you, the floor in, on the interior of the building, the sidewalk slopes down from that floor as you go to the left. Where the door is now, there's about a three and a half inch lip to get into the building. We can't have a lip, we have to start at the sidewalk grade. When you move over to the right side, it's just about flush with the sidewalk. In order for us to get an 18-inch differential in a ramp, we have, we take care of three inches where we come into the entry. Every section of the ramp has to have a five-foot flat area in front of it and behind it to the, for the wheelchair to land on. The building's only 18 feet wide, and the depth from where the elevation changes is only 27 feet. When you try and lay out that ramp and meet all the requirements for landings on each end, it's physically impossible to make it all in one run. We had to break it up into three runs. We got three inches at the front door, we got 12 more inches on the ramp with the landing, and then we got the last couple of inches turning right and going towards the bathrooms. Believe me, we worked hard just to get all these ramps in there and meet all the requirements. It's not just arbitrary to move it over to the right. If we had to get three more feet of ramp with landings, I don't, I don't think we could do it. I don't know where we would put them. And, I mean, if you just think about that space as an area that needs a ramp, that's one thing, but you also have to have the items that make it a business, a space for the bar, a space for the bandstand. And, I mean, the building is so narrow, and where the elevation changes as well into the building, I think we got a very good solution. I think it all works out great. If you, if you require that ramp to start in the middle of the building, that three inches is just, it's, it's very, very difficult to, to get over that. Plus, in light of these latest photos we have, you know, until, until we got these last photos, the, the most historic photo we had of the building was in the early 1990s. And now we have photos from the 80s showing that those, the windows that are now full-length windows originally were only half-size windows. So who in the heck knows what they were in 1932? If they were windows at all, or where the door was, they're just, unless we could find a more historic photo, I don't think we can say with any certainty what was historically correct. Having said that, the front of the building, the appearance of the front of the building wouldn't really change, all of the recessed openings would still be what they are. The fact that you actually entered to the right and not in the center anymore wouldn't really change the overall appeal or the appearance of the front of the building. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm trying to find the pictures.
One, one other thing I wanted to say, when you were talking about Secretary of Interior, Rafi was kind enough to provide me with a copy of that document, and I did go through it in some pretty good detail. And there's a major section in there about ADA requirements. That's, that is all part of the Secretary of the Interior's requirements, ADA is a huge part of that.
Okay, it sounds like to me that the door needs to be moved in order to meet the ADA requirements of the, getting all the ramps in and everything that are necessary with the way it's graded. Does anybody else have a comment? Mary, you did.
Coming. And I read this over very carefully. And I served on the RTC Transportation Access Advisory Committee for a number of years, which deals with access to vehicles, buildings, all types of different requirements. And I find that the recommendations that you have made actually enhance the ADA guidelines. It's not just people in wheelchairs, it's people with canes, people with visual impairments, people who have trouble walking, the distance of 18 inches for a drop, and, and planning all that out to make it really safe and accessible for everybody with all types of different abilities is really commendable, because a lot of people don't even go that far. So I appreciate what you've done, and I go along with what you, with the recommendations that you've made.
Susan, can I see those pictures?
Do you have a comment, Ray?
Didn't I give you?
Uh uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I gave one each.
I agree with Mary. And I do think that it's a great benefit to the historic district to have this building be restored and brought back to life and improved, and given another 50 years of lifespan. We're going to have to make some hard decisions. So I'm okay with the door moving, I'm more concerned right now about the windows. And then I'm wondering about the parapet, if there's any kind of a compromise we can make on the parapet.
What do you, what do you have in mind as far as the parapet?
Well, not, not raising it the 12 inches.
So just keep it as is? I think that's something we would consider.
Just to retain some of the features, at least, you know, if we're making some compromises with the door. And I think, listen, I think it's great what you guys are doing, so, you know, I'm all for it, but if there's some compromises we can make, I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but we do want to try and keep the, the, the contributing features, we want to keep as many of those as possible, the main one being the, the arcade at the front and the exterior, you know, for moving the door, let's try and keep the changes to a minimum.
Yeah, I think the arches are just a critical element, and those should stay. Those are just beautiful. The window openings, like Larry was saying, I wish we could find some earlier photos. The fact that they were smaller in the 80s doesn't mean that they weren't bigger in the 30s, or they could have been smaller, or who knows, you know? The door could have been in any one of those three alcoves. I agree, it probably was in the center, but, you know, unfortunately, the, the reality is that door is, it just is going to move. So it's, it's more just doing it in an appropriate way and getting happy with it. As far as the parapet wall, man, I wish they would have done something more ornate, kind of like the, the green hut. That parapet wall is awesome. What is now the coffee cup? So, you know, it's a pretty unimpressive parapet wall as it is. Maybe we could overcome that with a little bit of, you know, leave the parapet wall and, and put up a little bit of signage or something like that, just to sort of distract from the fact that it is a pretty, pretty unimpressive parapet wall, but I'd, I'd be willing to entertain that certainly. And we brought a visual aid of what we intend to build on the inside. I'd be happy to pass that around if y'all would like to see it.
Please do. Okay.
Would you, excuse me, would you be able to email me a JPG or a PDF or something of that later?
Certainly.
I'll need to add it to the website.
So speaking of the parapet, there was another thing that Courtney brought up, and that was the proposed arched feature and molding and not going with, and she proposed not with that design.
Keep it as is.
Very plain, boring, and like you suggested with a signage, some really cool signage.
LT, you good with that?
It's not that visible anyway.
I, I certainly would have preferred a, a more, a more ornate or a little bit more impressive parapet wall, but, you know, part of this process is encouraging people to appreciate the historical elements of it. And I think that, you know, assuming, you know, working, working with you guys so far has been rewarding in the sense that you're, you're, you're pliable and you're reasonable and it's, and it's, and, and quite frankly pleasant to work with. So we're, we're hoping that, that persists throughout the rest of the process. So yeah, we're, we're certainly willing to keep the parapet bone stock.
Okay, very good.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead, Blair.
So, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the pictures of the, the windows from the 60s, or 80s, I should say, and they look to be the same size as they are today.
I think that, right now, they go all the way to the ground.
Yeah, they go all the way to the ground now. Those pictures, they don't go all the way.
Blair, maybe I could send you a, a current photo?
Okay.
About six inches.
What, six inches?
Off the ground.
Currently?
No, in the 80s.
In the 80s?
In the 80s, it appears to be several feet off the ground, right?
Hmm, like, uh, three feet?
Is that what it is?
No, Brody, Brody goes like, no, it's like three feet instead of six inches.
Oh, you mean the J and R Trading Post?
Right.
The 1982 photo, bottom side page two.
Okay. I've got a picture here. Is there somewhere I can send this?
Yeah, no, I mean, the 1982 photo does show the windows a few feet above ground. Yeah.
But you're saying that it's only a couple inches from the ground?
Yeah, I would say maybe, maybe on the right side, as the concrete slopes up higher as we were discussing, it's maybe, maybe five inches to the, to the, to the lip, and then on the far left side, it looks like it's closer to about a foot, maybe 10 inches or so. And I, is there someplace I could send this so you could see a current?
I think if you look at page 22 where it shows Brody's, I think you can get a pretty good idea of what we were talking about with the windows are fairly close to the ground.
Right.
Oh, I, yep, you're right.
Yeah, now there?
I think they're symmetrical. I think the concrete just slopes enough, excuse me, that it, they look asymmetrical.
Yeah, from looking at these pictures here, they appear to be six, eight inches off the ground on both sides.
Is that the same as what we've got here? Yeah, that looks like the exact same, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That hasn't changed since Brody's.
So what's on page 22 appears to be matched up with what's on his current, current picture on his phone, so.
Yeah.
And then in the 80s, it appears to be substantially higher than that, right?
Right, yep.
So what's the recommendation to go to as, as historic as possible?
So my recommendation is to, no matter how big the window is, it was still just a glass plate window, clear from the outside, both windows, as well as the door was clear, at least while one door was at one point. So my recommendation has always been to keep the windows unobstructed from the outside as is, and if you need to cover them, that it be done so from the inside.
And I think that'll be easier to accomplish too, if we, if we go back to what was more historic, if there is, what would be on the inside a little bit more of almost a Wayne Scott, you know, there'd be a little bit more wall to work with. It'd be a lot easier to cover it up on the inside. And what was Alan's recommendation? Do you recall the?
It was a product that...
I think I wrote it down.
...was black and very reflective, and it went in place of windows in a lot of the older buildings. Like, yeah, I made a note of what was it.
Something glass.
Oh, was he trying to replicate?
Oh, Carraga, Carrara.
Carrara tile, okay. So he's trying to replicate what is at the company store, that storefront.
Black top.
Mm-hmm, which I don't think that existed here. So, I mean, there's nothing to show that that was a style, at least at this property. And when you look at the other pictures along that part of the street, it's just plain windows and plain doors rather than...
There again, we're flexible on that department as well. As far as accomplishing the look from the outside and having the, the glass and then making up on the inside whatever materials we need for sound absorption and safety and everything else.
So the other question I had was about the awning and the, where did it go?
Oh, about the, the full tile?
The patio and the awning. I guess where, I don't know where that's going, and what does that have to do with the historic building? Or is it a historic feature that you're restoring, a patio or an awning, or, I don't know?
No, this, this, uh, this patio is actually the, the ceiling of the bathroom down below, and it is the access to the second-story building. Full of all the second stories.
Oh, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
So it's the rear of the building, not the, not the facade?
So that's, that's what's providing the ADA access is?
Yeah.
So is it, it's the, it's the rear of the building, just?
Yeah.
And where you're also planning to change the, the, what do you call it? The drainage, sorry.
Right.
The drainage and access, yeah.
So that drainage repairs are gonna be in that patio area? Okay.
Yeah, if, if you said that that wasn't historical or wasn't necessary for ADA, I wouldn't argue the point.
That's, that's, well, I wasn't sure if the patio and awning were historic, and if it's not, then I don't think it should be covered by ADA, or by RDA. But that's just my opinion. And we don't say anything about the RDA as far as the fin, the funding for that. So, what else do I have? I think? And then I guess I had a question about the drywall and painting. Just, I guess I'm not sure or clear on, again, that's nothing, that's something that isn't preserving any historic fabric as far as I can tell. So again, that's one of my questions, if that's covered by, or should be covered by RDA, 'cause it doesn't...
I don't think you asked for that, did you? The paint? I think I saw it.
Yeah, it's there.
It's a component of the cost breakdown, but I think...
That's for the podium, sir? I'm sorry. Please?
Oh.
It's, it's obviously a component of the cost breakdown, and I think it's probably included in the sections where we, we tried to break out all of the RDA components from the, I mean, the ADA components. And of course, the bathrooms, the new bathrooms are gonna require drywall and painting and flooring and lighting and everything else. So we made an effort to go through and break those down, and if, I think if there's a section of painting and drywall that Rafi has labeled acceptable, it's that portion.
I think if you look at page three on our, on the historic interior features, there's a not applicable, and then there's a statement that they're not seeking RDA funding for any interior work outside of ADA compliance needs, so they're not looking for walls being repaired as part of the RDA, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly.
Right.
Yeah, as far as all the eligible or ineligible, we just, we just defer to Rafi and the city on that. We're not arguing any of those. And I, I don't remember when or who it was, but somebody brought up the point about drywall and how it's not historic. And unfortunately, every bit of lath and plaster that was in there originally, if there was any on the ceiling, the walls are blocked, so there's really none to, no, there's typically never lath on block walls. But on the ceilings, where there would have been lath and plaster, it had already been pulled down and replaced with drywall. So we found not one bit of lath in there, which really surprised me. And the, the framing underneath that had just been bastardized, man. They, they cut away for access for, for HVAC with no regard to shoring it up or replacing it. They would just cut, they would just cut rafters away and put, put things where they needed it. So it wasn't, definitely was not the best situation.
I've got one more question, just a clarification. Earlier, you're talking about the slope of the sidewalk. Just to help lay it out better in my brain, okay, on the right side, you're, you're saying the sidewalk is fairly close to the floor level?
Yes, sir.
Then just for my own peace of mind, about what is, at the other end, the left side, about what is a drop from floor level to the sidewalk?
What would you say the fall is right there? It's, I would say from, if, if, to, to the extreme, from the right side of the building to the left, it's actually visible in those photos, where it looks like the windows are asymmetrical, in the one on page 22, I believe that was.
I was just curious if you had, if somebody had...
From right to left?
Had a number and they had his 12 inches or eight inches or 15 inches?
Six, six inches or so, six? Maybe, probably six inches fall.
Okay.
From, from the right side to the left.
Okay.
Over 18 feet, something like that. Or... How, how wide is it? Yeah, 18 feet.
Okay, are there any other comments at this time? Grant, did you want to tell us anything?
No, I'm good.
Are, are you happy with the way we went over it?
Oh, certainly, yeah, I'm...
Okay, okay, good.
I was happy the first time.
Okay, good, good, good. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and Larry, did you have anything else to say?
No, I'm good, thanks. Thanks for coming out.
Okay.
For special meeting for it.
All right, thank you. All right, so I guess then we're through. If, if there's any other comments, then we'll...
You should...
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, you should. I guess the council is, now that you've seen more information, I guess, I assume they would like a motion with your recommendation.
Okay.
As to whether or not you support the proposed changes for the grant.
Linda, can I ask one question of Blair real quick? Blair, student of teacher, are you comfortable that Secretary of Interiors is good with a change of relocating the door? You, you feel that that meets the criteria well enough to be in ADA compliance, though? I'm all, I'm all for ADA compliance for accessibility to buildings and such, so I just, you know, if you're comfortable, I'll be comfortable.
So, as I said at the beginning, I concur with what...
Blair.
I... Oh.
I'm a little bit deaf in this here, I thought you said...
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
It happens to me, too.
That's okay.
I concur with Courtney's recommendation that it doesn't comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. However, I don't know if she has the full picture. So based on what I see and my understanding of the entirety of the project, I don't have a problem with the moving of the door, or, yeah, moving the door over to where the window is. I guess what my question is for the chair is, do we need to make a motion for the entirety of the project, or do we break it down to what we do approve of and what we don't approve of, or that maybe some people, like Glenn, is not comfortable with that door being moved? Do we just vote on that and then vote on other aspects?
That's entirely up to you, and I apologize for not mentioning this earlier, when you said you weren't sure that Courtney has the full picture. The thing I forgot to mention is she did say that in terms of ADA, she'd really need to get inside the building, you know, in order to be able to do a review of whether or not the interior changes comply with SOI. But I'm sure she's been watching this whole thing, so, like I said, if you wanted us to contact her, you know, we could do that.
I wonder if we should just go ahead and, maybe she can comment over the phone?
If I can make a little comment, again, on just relocation door, the, the reasoning behind moving the, the door for, you know, for the ramp access, easier build of ramp and stuff, you know, I completely understand that, you know, and that is a very reasonable reason why they want to move it because of the elevation change, you know? 'Cause if you're at one end of the building, you gotta raise a ramp this high, it's a lot harder than if you gotta go to the other building and only raise it up so high. I understand that completely, and that's just part of the clarification I wanted to get. But now the only, you know, and again, I'm all for the ADA, keeping up with that for accessibility to people. I just want to make sure that we're following in compliance with the, you know, Secretary of Interiors, 'cause I'd hate for down the road for something to be found, "Duh, we're, everybody's wrong," and the council gets bit in the butt, we in turn get bit in the butt on it in the long run. Because, you know, we are talking a bunch of money for RDA, you know, historic preservation RDA. I just want to make sure we're, we're making a good, solid, right decision. So I mean, that's why, you know, I mean, I've got, most of my answers are, you know, questions have been answered with a good, solid, good, solid cause, and so now it just comes down to, are we gonna be in compliance with the Secretary of Interior if we say yes? That's by only, you know, our, you know, I'm not sure exactly where we're at with that. I mean, we got kinda...
Well...
You know, I, I want to make sure we do the right thing for, you know, for everybody involved, you know, for the applicants, for us, for the council, and for the city overall in the long term. So I just, you know, want to make sure we're making a good, a good choice, you know, so...
So I would defer to Courtney for her, for her comments, I guess, if she can do so either over the phone or in person.
Well, she said she'd be available by phone, so we'll give it a try. Hey, Courtney, have you been able to watch?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything you could assist the committee with in terms of what's been discussed?
Um, if she can do so either...
Oh, if you could mute your computer.
Oh, yes. Hold please. Okay, very good. Sorry about that. Um, yes, was there a specific question for me?
Um, hey, Courtney, this is Blair. We are really...
Hi, Blair.
Um... Um, we're kind of stuck on the movement of the door to the, to the far right. And my understanding of making a building ADA compliant, making a historic building ADA compliant is, it's allowed, and it needs, but it just needs to be done sensitively and with as minimal, with as minimal amount of damage to character-defining features and historic fabric, et cetera. And at least my understanding of the project is that in order for the ADA to be accessed, in order to have the building accessible on that far right, using that far right window as a entrance for a door, it would diminish damage, further structural and historic fabric damage within the building in the long run, rather than if it were in the front of the building. But that's, I've not been in the building. I have not spoken, you know, on site with the architect, looked at the fabric, and understood, you know, exactly the movement or the accessibility needs, you know, whether it's in the middle of the building or the far right of the building. So I'm just wondering, can we make a decision at this point about moving the door? Or does it really require somebody to be on site, such as yourself, who can look at, you know, the overall property and the accessibility needs as a whole? Or can you see from the drawings and the discussion that we've had this evening whether it's in, it may not be in compliance, so here I'm going to get all Section 106C. It may not be in compliance, but they're mitigating the damage to that, adding that door to the far right by incorporating the size of the current window. They're not like expanding the, the opening except down to the ground level, but not at height or width.
No.
And, so, sorry, sorry, let me just, let me finish there. And I've also recommended, in order to restore or to maintain the historic facade, my recommendation is to have the one window of, you know, the, the window on the left remain a, you know, full-on glazed window, and that the door in the center be converted to a window and then matching to the left window, and then the door to the right is a door. And that's what I guess I'm thinking of as a mitigation, if this were 106. Go for it.
So, all right, so there's a few things. I wanted to start briefly with what the Secretary of the Interior Standards says specifically about accessibility. And I'll just read right from their, their treatment of historic properties document. It is often necessary to make modifications to a historic building to make it compliant with accessibility code requirements. Federal rules, regulations, and standards provide guidance on how to make historic buildings accessible. Work must be carefully planned and undertaken in a manner that results in minimal or no loss of historic exterior and interior character-defining spaces, features, or finishes. The goal should be to provide the highest level of access with the least impact to the historic building. Now that being said, everything else you read about historic preservation and ADA is that, you know, as Susan mentioned, ADA trumps preservation, but you want to make a good faith effort to try to keep as much historic material as possible. So there is, there's that one aspect of it. Now regarding the interior and what type of things will, what type of changes will happen to the building on the interior, I'm not sure. I've been in the building, but it's been a while. So in, and I'm, I'm reading the grant application, and it says that nothing is left of the interior, but the Secretary of Interior Standards discusses primary and secondary significant spaces. So you would have, you know, in a retail store, you would have, just as an example, that front space, like a lobby space, or the shop space, you know, where the counter might be and, and the, and the goods might be on display cases, that would be your primary space. And then typically, you might have a secondary space which had offices and/or restaurants or something of that nature. And so that's kind of what, and I don't really need access, even photographs would be fine, but if I could just get a sense of what the building looks like now before the work is completed, what also might be helpful is a section of the building going from the front to the back, if that's available, that would help me visualize what the changes are that are being recommended. So, yeah, I mean, with the way it is now, the, the changes that are being proposed for the front facade, they don't meet the Secretary of Interior Standards, that the character-defining feature is, you know, that it's symmetrical and it has a centered, you know, door. And I think, you know, it might even be more appropriate if both of the windows were matching in size so that you kind of keep up the sort of continuity, but that's, you know, just a thought, but, you know, you guys can, can work that out. But, but yeah, it, it doesn't, at, right now, the facade work doesn't meet the, the, the proposed work doesn't meet the Secretary of Interior Standards, as it is now.
So I guess this is a question for Susan. Do we not move forward with an opinion if we were to send images and a side or section drawing to Courtney for additional advice?
Before you answer that, Susan, I got a thought. I don't know if it's a good one or not, but could we take a half hour recess, visit the place, it's just right around the corner, take some pictures, shoot them off to Courtney, then everybody here can get a quick refresh, I assume. We got the applicants here, I'm sure that they can arrange an access for us to take a quick look through?
There are interior pictures in the back, and we took, we took what the current interior is, the pictures are already there. I mean, I don't mind if you have to take them again, but they already in the package.
I do know that as a key, though.
Yeah, I'm just, just throwing that out as a, it's not like it's up in Reno or something, you know, it's just around the corner.
Yeah, we can't really, um-
Can't take a recess?
Changing the, well, I mean, it's a matter of a quorum, and I'm not, I'd have to check with the clerk's office regarding open meeting law issues, because the meeting was advertised for here, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, I just threw the idea out, so.
I know.
I'd be happy to send off some current pictures to Courtney. I think I have her email address right here.
I, I mean, I put in the packet what Raffi gave me, and there were no interior photos. I mean, there were the old historic photos, but you're saying it's all gutted inside now, and I-
I included a photo from the rear facing front, from the front facing rear. They were in the original package.
Oh, I, I guess maybe Raffi didn't think those were-
Okay, I got a, I have a photo right here that tells the whole story.
I do see what you're saying, Claire, though, about having the, the second window be the same width as the door. I think just visually that was throwing me off, but, I don't think, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter either way.
The, the other thing I thought of was to, so you have your left window remaining a window, as is, the center becoming a window, the, the door being a window, again glazed, and then the other door resembling the left window, the, the right window that's now a door. It would resemble the left window by being like a clear door. Because when you look at the building now and in other historic pictures of that building, as well as other buildings along that side of the Nevada Way, it's, it's primarily windows, clear windows and clear door entrances.
Mm-hmm.
Or window, you know, doors with divided lights, and same with windows with divided lights of different proportions, and mostly all wood. I don't think I've seen any metal-type windows or metal casement-type windows that are on a lot of the government buildings, but there's quite a variety over the years of window types and sizes.
Mm-hmm.
But they're primar, at least in the historic period in the 30s, 40s, and to some 50s, where it's just wooden windows and wooden doors with lots of glass. And the only change I saw or could see, which is kind of fascinating, is what's now the coffee cup, where they added that like 1950s blue tile at Harry's Cafe, which is now the coffee cup, and they kind of infilled that facade with that 1950s mosaic-y light blue tile. I think it's light blue and tan, maybe, but.
Blair, you're throwing out the idea, and if I got you right, I'm kind of liking it. Maybe if we get something from the applicant, all right, leave the existing center door as it is, just, well, just permanently lock it, and then kind of try and disguise the new doorway to look kind of like more of a window, you know, is that what you're kind of thinking?
Well, I wasn't, no, I wasn't suggesting just lock the door and walk away, but-
Well, I mean, more, more so than just a, you know, lock, but you leave it so it kind of looks like the original door. You know, they could, you know, put something on the inside, you know, with the windows or something, but it would still maybe look like the original entry, but then, you know, then hover, you know, then with, with the new door to the, to the right, and, you know, with window treatments or whatever, kind of make, give it kind of style like what window would be. I don't, you know, I'm not sure if that's feasible or not, but I mean, is it something that we could think about?
Can I find the picture, Grant? Were you able to send it to Courtney?
I did, I sent one to Courtney.
Okay.
Of the interior, yeah.
Okay.
I think functionally, I, I would prefer, I think leaving the door, having two front doors, I don't, you know, I'm a form-follows-function kind of a guy, and two, two doors doesn't really do much for me, but I, I do like the idea of having the, the windows be symmetrically, at least, you know, top and bottom, the, the left and then now the center window, and then the right opening stays as it is, and the door is recessed. I think that's, to me, that's the ideal, that's the ideal compromise. Really, what we're talking about is, is ideally, yeah, a door right in the center. I think it's, it's symmetrical, it looks great, and unfortunately, it's just technically infeasible. It's just not, it's, we, unfortunately, we just can't accomplish that. So there's a difference between what would be historically accurate and what would be most aesthetically pleasing. And I think historically accurate is, yes, leave the door there, but aesthetically pleasing and functionality, I don't, I don't love the idea of having a redundant front door. I think, I think having glass that, that is a, is comparable height as the one on the left is, is the, is my ideal solution.
This is Courtney. Is it possible to reuse the front, the existing front door?
We could reuse it, maybe not necessarily as a front door. It's not the most secure front door. I think it would work in the building going back towards the restroom. It, I think it would, we could certainly reuse the door, but it's not the most secure front door. In, in this type of establishment, you, I, I think we would want a more secure front door.
Okay.
Well- We would certainly reuse it, though. I would, I definitely would not be tossing that door. Although, I got to say, I'm, I'm quite certain that's not the original door, that it's not a, it, it does not have the appearance of a very old door. I would, I would be willing to bet that thing's been replaced.
And I was wondering if it's, is it too narrow? Is it ADA compliant? I don't, I don't know.
Is that a three, is that a 3O opening?
I don't even know, we never considered using that at the entrance, I never measured it.
Regardless, I would use the door just because it's cool, but as an entry door, it's, it's not going to serve our purposes. Courtney, did you get my photo?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good.
I have a question. Those steps, do we know anything about the steps on the interior?
Uh, they're not, I think that used to be the end of the building, so I believe those steps were not, that they, they're certainly not, they were not used, they were not made out of the same materials as the building itself. They, they appeared to be added when they added the addition to the building.
Okay. And the, and the shiny wall surface, is that paint or is that plaster?
Let me pull that photo up again.
But like over drywall?
The shiny surface, are you talking about on the top left?
Yeah, there's like, just that shiny wall surface, is that just painted drywall?
Uh, it's just, it's just paint over, I, I guess that's plaster, but it had been covered up by, by beadboard, and there's glue and, and a bunch of holes in it, so although, do you see all those kind of, it looks like it's polka dot on the left-hand side?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's all, that's all glue, and then down below, there's more glue where there's a Wayne Scott. And then, yeah, that's just, I think, semi-gloss paint or high gloss paint.
Okay. So what, what are you planning for the interior finish?
Uh, I could send you a photo.
Okay. All right, is it going to be plaster or are you using drywall?
There will be, none of the walls in the front of the house will have any drywall. It'll be, it'll be plaster, it'll be a Wayne Scott, similar to what was there. There's the, from where the 18-inch lip, the 18-inch step-up is, from their back, that the building actually narrows, and from their back, it will be plaster. In the front, the design spells out brick, veneer, and I'm not certain that's what we're going to go with. It could be, it could be wallpaper, it could also just be burnished plaster, but the, the Wayne Scott certainly we're, we're pretty well committed to.
Okay.
But I will send you that, the render, right now, using modern technology.
Well, maybe Holly can zoom in on that.
Yeah. Holly, are you able to zoom in? Or do you need me to hold it somewhere?
Hold it, no, hold it, you're not really, okay, hold on a second.
Courtney, will you tell me the first few letters of your email address, please?
The first two letters?
Yeah, first two or three.
C-O-U?
C-O-U, did it. Um, dang it.
Courtney, can you see what's on the video now?
Um, hold on just one second. I see Mr. Turner sending me an email. I'm, I'm, I have a little bit of a delay.
Oh, that's right, there, there is a delay. Give, give it another 20 seconds.
Okay.
Oh, okay, you're gonna have, you're gonna have the render in your email, email right now.
Okay.
I found you. The actual one's 5.3 megabytes. You think you need that, or you think, you think a smaller one will suffice?
A small one will, will be fine.
Okay, here you go. It's traveling through a series of tubes as we speak.
Going to space. So I can see it on the video a little bit, it's not, the, the resolution isn't great, but I can sort of see it now. But yeah, I would like, I mean, is there, is there a section available that goes from the front to the back?
Uh, render?
A section drawing?
Basically the side view drawing.
Has a section that cuts the entire building or not, is in that plan? Well, the floor plan certainly shows from the elevation, seems to be, pretty straightforward, it's a rectangle with a 18-inch fit. It's a rectangle with a 18-inch fit.
Well, I'll still, I will need a little bit of time to, I won't be able to make a recommendation earlier today, I have to do a little bit more research. But I can, you know, certainly do that within the next few days and it would be done before the city council meeting.
Is that going to be, is that going to be sufficient for the committee to make a recommendation? Because you can certainly condition your recommendation on whatever final information might be available from Ms. Mooney.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so you want to wait and make a recommendation?
Or, no, we would, our recommendation would be based on Ms. Mooney's recommendation.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a recommendation if we agree that we accept the recommendations as listed here with Ray's exceptions for the parapet and the arch. And Blair's wanting all the windows to look the same with the glazing.
Okay, well, what we could do is you can make a motion based on your recommendations and additions, and then we can vote.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the analysis of the RDA Historic Preservation Grant Eligibility List with exceptions with Ray's comments regarding the arch and the parapet and Blair's comments regarding the window glazing and the size of the windows.
Okay, we need a second. Suck it to the motion. Am I allowed to second as a chairman?
Yeah, you can second for the purposes of discussion. It doesn't mean that you have to vote, you know.
Okay, I'll second it for purposes of discussion. I'll second the motion.
So I agree with your motion to go with Ray's suggestions regarding, again, I'm using North Winds' recommendations. Number two, where the alteration of the lower parapet, the parapet will not be raised. That was Ray's recommendation, correct?
I believe.
And then also the use of the, what was it, the arch?
The arch.
On the parapet. Yeah. Would not be used, and I think the project proponent agreed with that. I would rather wait for Ms. Mooney's recommendation regarding the windows and doors. And would base my recommendation on her recommendation, or I would agree with her recommendation.
I've got a question for Susan, if I may. If we want to wait for the recommendation from Ms. Mooney, would be, would be possible for, to schedule another, what is, quick historic preservation committee meetings after we get something back from her? So then we could make a final decision based on that information? Is that, is that doable, is that something just too far out of the realm?
That'd be challenging, given the time now before the next city council meeting and the fact that we need at least three business days' notice for posting agendas. But I think what you could do is, if you're comfortable with what Blair just said, I mean, you could basically forward your recommendation saying just what Blair said. You know, this item A, this item B regarding, those two items regarding the parapet. And that if the group is wanting to basically agree with whatever Ms. Mooney's recommendation is on the doors and windows, you can incorporate that as part of your motion.
Okay, then, just, I want to make sure, make sure I got a good understanding. So if we do that, you know, as you said, you know, we, you know, we approve as long as A, B, and C are done. And then D would show, just picking numbers or letters, you know, that D would be based upon the recommendation from Ms. Mooney from North Winds. If she says yea or nay, she would be the deciding vote, basically, on if this whole project is approved or not approved. Because if we don't get to weigh in on what she recommends, then it would go to council and then they would have to base their opinion on, just on hers, whether to approve or disapprove. Am I correct in thinking that way?
Basically, but of course, you know, if the committee's not comfortable doing that, you don't have to do it that way. But another thing to keep in mind, I think with regard to Glenn, your earlier comments, is it's not as if the Secretary of Interior standards are for a project of this, that is like this, that is not using any federal or state dollars. It's not like those are mandates. It's not like the actual Secretary of the Interior is going to be weighing judgment on whether or not you did the right thing or not. I don't know how many of you were able to watch the last virtual conference, you know, sponsored by the, I think it was the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. But there was a class on, a virtual class on the SOI standards. And it was almost done tongue in cheek because they had the two professionals hosting the class, you know, role-playing, typical historic preservation committee members for various examples of remodel projects, where the role-playing they did showed each person taking like completely different, you know, opinions on whether that proposal met that SOI standard or not. And they did it to show that there's a variety of opinions that are out there, and it doesn't necessarily mean that any one decision is right or wrong. It's something that, it's a judgment call to a degree.
So I have a question, Susan. So Courtney, is she going to review whether it's necessary to move the door to the right to comply with the ADA recommendations? Or is that something different? Or I know she's also looking at the windows and the interior and the plaster and the drywall and whatever else goes on inside. But what, is she looking at a decision to override the SOI and go with the ADA requirements? Is she looking at the door issue or is she looking at other things too?
My inner, oh, is she still there?
Yes.
Yes.
Blair's deferring to you if you want to attempt to answer that.
Sure. I, I'm not an ADA expert, so I'm not reviewing whether or not the moving the door is necessary. I'm simply reviewing the impacts of moving the door on the architectural integrity and historic integrity of the facade and whether or not that complies with the Secretary of Interior standards.
And so I believe, Courtney, then, if, let's say, you suggest that the door remains in the center, then it's up to the architect to decide how that could be, comply, I guess, with ADA.
The, so the door is moving to the right. Keeping it in the center just isn't, is technically infeasible. That door is going to move, I guess what we're talking about is whether or not.
It gets funded.
It gets funded or whether you, it's all about your recommendation. So as a point of clarification, are you deferring your votes to Courtney? Or is this specifically, so what we're talking about is the project as a whole, maintaining the historic integrity of the parapet wall and the arches and, you know, the plaster and everything else, which, you know, I think part of the process, working with the Historic Preservation Committee, is to encourage us to keep that. You know, removing any incentive to do so, I think, changes the entire landscape of the project. So are we talking about deferring judgment on whether or not this grant gets made to Courtney? Or is this her, is this just specific to the entry? Because we're still talking about ADA, we're still talking about, you know, the impact on, on business and Boulder City as a whole and everything. So that would, that would certainly be valuable for us to know going forward, whether or not there is, you know, what, I get it, this is kind of our first time navigating this process. But I think when we look at it through a microscope, it's easy to get lost in the details. But when we look at it through a telescope, we're trying to keep this building original and also make it functional. And if, if there's, my fear is that if there's no incentive to do that, you're going to get a bunch of people coming in here and not, not paying any, any mind to the historic character of a building and opting not to, electing not to undergo this process and just do their own thing.
Okay, I think we're going to go back to the motion that Mary made. And she, she, Blair's just discussing going with Courtney's recommendation. And that doesn't have to be included in the motion. We can make a motion that will just, so that can go to the council, just based on what Mary said. Mary, could you redo your motion again, like what you said?
Yes, thank you. I recommend we approve the project eligibility based on the RDA grant to include the ADA requirements with the exception of the comments made by Ray about the parapet, the arch, and Blair's comments about the glazing of the windows and the size.
Okay, okay, we're going to, we're going to vote on that motion. So it's been seconded, so it's now a motion that can be voted on. So let's take a vote on that motion.
You want us to start, all those in favor say yea.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
So I'm sorry, that's who? Mary Ann and Linda? So just two, okay.
Okay, and all those against? Say nay.
Nay.
I'd like to.
Some changes.
Okay, all right, wait, 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 we have to vote on that motion. Okay, so the motion's been killed. Okay, so, so we're going to make a new motion. Okay, Blair, do you want to make a new motion?
Sure. I make a motion to go with the proposal for the RDA grant eligibility as listed, with the exception of the changes proposed by Ray regarding the parapet. That was also agreed on by the project proponent. And with the exception of the requesting input from Courtney Mooney regarding treatment options for the windows and door entrance only, which must comply with ADA. And if that includes moving it to the right.
For purposes of discussion, I'll go ahead and second that. I've got a quick question for Susan, maybe she can help us out. All right, now going with this here, Courtney's going to be looking over this, or Ms. Mooney, I should say, I don't know personally. I've got a question. Then when we get that information back, would it be appropriate for somebody from this body to go to that city council meeting and discuss at council as a representative of this body to, to yea, the nays, the pluses, the minuses of what Ms. Mooney is coming back with? Because we can't have a meeting between now and then, apparently. But I would think that it'd be something that somebody from, from this committee should take that information and give it to, make sure that the council knows that it's not necessarily a yea or nay from us based on hers. So she's not really making the final decision. That it would be onto council to make that decision based on our recommendation plus further information that we could gather from, you know, Ms. Mooney by one of, you know, somebody, and then is presented to council as a report, shall we say, you know, of additional findings that we've got after this meeting took place. Would that be appropriate, or is that something that can be done, or is that?
Can I ask a question? Can, if Ms. Mooney makes a recommendation, again, regarding the windows and the door, the front facade only, can you just email it to all of us and we vote that way, or does it have to be a public meeting?
Unfortunately, I don't think it complies with open meeting law for you to send your responses back by email. And I'm saying that from experience with the Planning Commission where members have said, well, I'll, I'll be out of the country for that month. Can I read the report and send you in advance my vote? And the answer was no, because the idea is that all your deliberations and decisions must be made at a noticed public meeting where the public has a chance to observe your decision-making process.
Maybe there is a way around that, is what we could do is we send two recommendations to the city council for them to pick. You know, we recommend, as Blair has stated, you know, that, that recommendation, but then maybe make another recommendation. Let's see, I'm not sure how I would want to say this, but you know, that, because we don't have all this, you know, we're looking for some additional information, you know, make it another motion that if information from Ms. Mooney comes in that, you know, and it's this or that, that this body would recommend that they take, you know, Ms. Mooney's recommendation or not take it. I'm not sure how we could word that, but I mean, you know, is there a way we can send two recommendations? You know, the one with the basic modification we've talked about, but now waiting for, get, shall we say, I don't want to say a final decision, but you know, just a little bit more information from, you know, from North Winds. They seem to be pretty knowledgeable about this stuff.
So can we, I mean, I guess, I can't imagine Ms. Mooney making a recommendation that I wouldn't agree with. I don't think there's going to be anything that's really out there outrageous or will not comply with ADA. Or of course SOI standards, or it may not comply with SOI standards. But we have enough information and valid information in order to make sure that we are doing the best we can to comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. It's just what I think we're asking her for is some, some details. Based on, you know, a little bit more information that she has just received. You know, she does, she hasn't seen the whole picture. And if that's a matter of the type of treatment for the windows and the doors, is what I'm guessing, is that's pretty basic or benign in regards to the overall, you know, things that I think we all think she's going to make a recommendation that's really outrageous or out there is going to significantly impact your project, and I don't think it will.
Yeah, so, and I think consistent with, with our attitude approaching this up till this point, we'd be, we'd be willing to work with her recommendations as far as window treatments and the size of the windows and everything like that. But with the understanding that that door, that door has to move to meet our purposes, that door has to move to the right to get the, to get the access, to get the ramps, to get everything. We spent a tremendous amount of time working with Alan Stromberg and, and made several sacrifices to the operations, to the actual, the layout of the building in order to accomplish, to accomplish the ADA access. So, and I hate to introduce another variable into this, but if, if we don't get a recommendation from Historic Preservation Committee, does that mean that we will be proceeding with traditional RDA instead of Historic Preservation RDA?
Well, that's an option, but of course, you know, that traditional RDA doesn't pay for anything inside the building or.
It does do building additions, though, correct?
But you're not doing an addition per se, although the bathrooms are technically the underground. Although the bathrooms are technically the underground addition, so to speak?
Correct. So, and you know, there again, I defer to the city and all these. My larger point was that in the future, somebody who's attempting to go through this process, it would be a shame if they were steered away from Historic Preservation RDA, where they're making their best efforts to maintain the integrity of the building towards a regular RDA where they might, they might say, "Well, we've got more money to spend on the outside, so let's do a big parapet wall. Let's change the arches and square them off. Let's do cladding. Let's do," you know, any number of things. So we will await your recommendation and adjust accordingly.
Can I just, though, suggest, though, that no matter whether it's RDA money or not, if you're still, the Historic Preservation Committee would still make a recommendation regarding any changes to the facade of the building. It's part of our normal historic preservation, if a building permit is pulled and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so I guess that would be another question, then, is if what we're intending to do currently, if this wasn't a historic grant and just a regular RDA, if your temperature would be different? If it's, you know what I'm saying?
I think it would be the same.
So it would still be essentially deferred to Courtney? So subcontract out your decision to...
Just only this component is being subcontracted. And actually, that's something that's pretty common or can be common in Historic Preservation Committees, where there isn't experts in certain components of preservation. So to defer to an expert is completely normal. It's unfortunate that we're doing it at such a late time in this project planning process. Had this been done, like, maybe earlier, then we wouldn't have this issue. But, so again, I don't really think her recommendation is going to be completely outrageous or goes against your project plans and timing.
I think a key issue to remember is that in the end, the council's going to decide what gets funded or not. As the grant is currently written, it says that, you know, the eligible items must comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. So it's possible that Courtney's recommendation will come back. As she's verbally said to me is that she understands the need for ADA access, and normally ADA trumps SOI. But if her task is solely to speak to whether or not the issue of moving the door, you know, would meet the standard of SOI, obviously, even after she reviews more information, that information could still be yes or no. It just means either that aspect of the project, the impact would be whether that one particular aspect gets funding or not. But it doesn't mean that the whole project doesn't get funded. It's just that one aspect may or may not receive funding based on that.
Ah, I see. So it's not a blanket?
It's not a blanket, yes or no for your home.
Removing eligible... Oh.
Right. I mean, there's still all those other items that definitely are eligible that the council can consider. This is not to say that...
So this is specifically their recommendation to council of whether or not they approve the moving of the door, essentially is what we're talking about?
The issue is whether or not the items that we have so far identified, you know, staff has done our best job to identify of all the items you want to do, which ones are eligible for the RDA grant in terms of how we drafted up the grant. And we said, "These items are eligible and these items are not." So we went through your list and came up with that. What we didn't, as staff, have the expertise to do then, is say, "Okay, for those eligible items, do they conform with the Secretary of Interior standards?" And so that's where we reached out to Courtney for help. And on that list that I had emailed you, you know, a number of, you know, some items were, yes, they comply, and others were not applicable. And the only ones, it seemed that she said were not compliant with the SOI standards had to do with moving the door and the changes to the parapet. So you've already agreed to pretty much not make the changes to the parapet or to at least, you know, to go along with what was recommended. So then the only aspect that is subject to yes or no for funding relative to compliance with SOI is the moving of the door. And Blair's, you know, Blair's been trying to steer that towards a positive by, you know, putting in parameters which would make sure that the openings retain as much of their original historic character as possible. I believe what Courtney is saying is relative to that she might need to see... The other aspect is what we determined to be eligible, because our grant list says these, all these work, all this work indoors is eligible. Our grant program, what we don't have the expertise again on is, okay, is all the indoor work compliant with the Secretary of Interior standards? And we all agree that this is a learning process for us. And I'm sure what will come out eventually on the other end is a more refined grant program. And it's obviously going to have to address the balance of ADA issues versus the Secretary of Interior standards, because this is just a perfect example of here where they conflict. But obviously, ADA is necessary and desirable. So unfortunately, you're the guinea pig that is getting stuck in the middle here.
Hey, talk good.
We apologize for that. But also, we're trying to move the applicants' process forward. And so trying to schedule yet another special meeting before the 27th isn't very practical.
Well, I just threw it out there. If it was possible, you know, then we'd have additional information. Still would be done in time for the next council meeting. That's why I was just wondering if it was possible. Apparently, it's not, but possibly maybe Blair could withdraw her motion and remake it, that we accept all, that we go along with the Historic Preservation RDA funds for all the items that we've stated, except for the one, you know, if North Winds comes back with that, "Yes, that's a good move. It complies with da-da-da-da." We would then support that decision on just that one area of funding, you know. And if she were to say no, then this group would say, we would support her no on just the portion of the funding relating to that one area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It does make sense.
I second that.
The only other unknown item is that, you know, all the items that staff believes are eligible indoors, we don't know if Courtney will then end up saying that all of those indoor items are eligible per SOI or not. Given the naked condition of the building, you know, my guess is Courtney's opinion, you know, may presumably be positive about that. Courtney, I don't know if you can kind of weigh in on that?
Well, my thinking was that, you know, the interior items that have been requested, that kind of falls more into purview of council to say yea or nay on this or that. We're primarily concerned at the front of the building.
Right, but per the grant program, the grant program was designed to require a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Committee for the historic, not just for exterior items. Presumably, as it was drafted, it was, okay, the whole kit and caboodle. Since if people are asking for RDA funds to make changes inside the building to restore historic aspects of the building or to maintain and extend the life of a historic building, the point of the grant was to get the HPC's opinion on all of that.
No, I understand that. And with the things that have been asked for and that are eligible, you know, for the interior of the building that are eligible under different rules we've got on piece of paper, I would, you know, be in support of that as long as it meets Historic Preservation RDA, you know, guidelines. I don't have any problem with that. The only thing is, I think the only undecided we have is just the doorway. Everything else is, you know, is kind of, with the parapet and stuff like that, you know, that's taken care of, you know. So just kind of a final, on just that one last little detail.
And Larry did make a good point.
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Listen, I'm willing to come back anytime for a special meeting to accommodate you guys. I mean, I feel bad for you, for us all finding ourselves in this situation. But it is, it is a learning process. It's a pretty major one, too. And I'm all for us coming back here again. I mean, if one or two of us has to call in even, I'll be here, whenever, whenever we can do that. It's only going to be a short meeting.
Let me just go look at the calendar here.
Yeah, if we can be squeezed in before the next council meeting, I can make myself available for a special meeting.
Larry and I will accommodate as well.
But Susan's got a calendar she's got to fight. So that's...
Oh, sure.
So that's a determining factor. Does the calendar agree?
Well, I guess I'd really want to know if the committee really, if that's where you want to go. It's a very narrow window, because if we, you know, I could get an agenda posted before 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, you know, which is what I'd have to do pretty much for a meeting next Monday, because the staff report would be due the following day. I'd only need three of you to show up. If that's, if you don't feel comfortable moving forward with a recommendation today?
I just think it would show a lot of goodwill and be a positive thing. If there's any way we can do it, I think we should try and do it.
I can come.
I'm good to come whenever.
I'm available.
We'll be here.
We can reschedule.
Courtney, how quickly do you think you'd be able to make a determination on the interior items and the moving of the door?
Actually, composing an email right now to Tiana with the Boulder City Museum to see if she has any interior photographs in addition to the ones that were submitted. And I can let you know tomorrow what she says. And if they're available pretty quickly, I can have a fairly quick turnaround within a couple of days.
And Courtney, I can send you every photo that Tiana sent me.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, she is already, Tiana and Dennis McBride both dug in, dug pretty deep. And I've got everything they've come up with, so I'll forward those to you tonight.
Oh, so I don't need to bug?
What's that?
I don't need to bug Tiana, then?
Oh, no, no. I mean, feel free to, but I can just give you everything that she has sent me.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
It's, you guys probably have them already. It's the Rosies and Brody's photos. That's everything she had in her archives.
Really?
Yeah, that was everything. That was everything Tiana was able to, and then one picture, one pamphlet, a brochure. And it doesn't show, it doesn't show our building at all, so. But Larry did make a good point, and I'm not sure if it's been noted yet, that the door itself, the actual entry door, is not included as an eligible item in the RDA anyways. So that's, if it's about the funding of the front door, that's, it's... That's already been removed.
Okay, well, that makes it simple. Okay, so, okay, so what do you guys want to do? Do we want to withdraw this motion that we have on the floor?
Put it in abeyance?
I think your motion covered what Larry was mentioning. You know, Courtney is going to give us her recommendations, and then they're going to look at it and, you know, I don't know if we, I think your recommend, I think your motion was fine the way it was.
Although actually Blair's last motion was solely with regard to the window and door issue, and the applicants have just clarified that, you know, that's not part of the requested grant funding. But Courtney does still need to make a, you know, basically give us her opinion as to whether or not the other interior items proposed for the grant conform to the SOI standards.
Right. And that's fine.
Okay, so we're happy with the motion that's on the floor. Could we restate the motion?
Well, it's, well, like I said, Blair's motion was specific to moving the window and door with, you know, for ADA purposes.
Well, and Ray's comments on the parapet and the arch.
Right, that, but I mean, it sounds like the, now where your, well, what you have on this eligibility list for windows and glass was only $1,200. So was that some, was that including the front window changes? Or was that something at the back of the building?
I think that would only be the front, right?
So, I mean, the worst-case scenario, since you're saying the front door isn't part of this list anyway.
Correct.
And if Courtney's ruling on the other facade changes were that those still didn't comply with the SOI, it's just $1,200. That would not be included as part of the grant.
Scoop of chocolate, scoop of vanilla.
So I guess I wonder if you guys want to reconsider that motion?
Well, if you can withdraw it, and we can...
I guess, though, I mean, yes, the doors themselves are not included, but there's subfloor for entry ramp and concrete ramps and landing. That is in order to, you're, are you seeking funding for moving the entrance from the center to the right?
That's just the ramp. That's just, that's just one of the three ramps and landings.
So those are considered eligible, or those are up for consideration as that relate to the entrance changes?
Okay, because we need to vote, we either need to withdraw the motion or we need to vote on the motion and start over.
Maybe Blair could withdraw and then restate.
That's what I think.
All right, I withdraw my previous motion and restate the motion as such that the Historic Preservation Committee agrees with the list of project needs as identified on the cost list here, with the exception of the parapet changes that were recommended by Courtney Mooney in her evaluation. And that was also recommended by Ray, member Ray Turner. And that we, so we move forward with all of that. But we are waiting for additional information from Courtney Mooney regarding the front entrance, treatment of the, the treatment of the front entrance, door and window, as well as interior.
Well, we can't do that.
I don't understand the interior.
We wouldn't be able to vote on that, on this motion if we're waiting for information from Courtney.
I just said we would be waiting for Courtney. We are not...
Right, but the front door isn't what they're asking grant money for. So it's not really, you can't, you can't make any recommendations on something that they're not asking money for.
So what are we waiting on Courtney Mooney's recommendation for? Just the interior?
That would be the interior.
Okay, so just replace the front entrance treatment to the interior treatments. Does that make sense?
Okay, I'd like to have that restated again, so it's clear for all of us.
I believe, tell me if I've got this right, Blair's saying recommending, or the motion would be that the committee recommends approval of the latest eligibility list, with the exceptions that that what would be funded regarding the parapet changes would have to conform to the recommendations per Courtney Mooney, meaning not raising the parapet height and not adding the arch detail on the lower parapet. And that the status of interior changes be subject, as to whether or not they meet the SOI standards, would be per the recommendation of Courtney Mooney.
Okay, we need a second on that motion. Okay. Okay, we'll take a vote, then. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposing? The motion has been passed. Okay, now we need to look at whether... Okay, now we need to look at whether we want to schedule another meeting.
Well...
I think we've covered it in the motion.
Yeah, I don't think...
So I don't think we need to.
No, you don't need another meeting. If you're basically, in terms of, basically you don't have a prob, the only items you would like changed in terms of what the applicant is doing are the, the parapet changes as recommended by member Turner. And certainly the committee has made, at least members of the committee have made their wishes known as to how they'd like the front door and window treatment handled. The front door's not what you're asking grant money for, but you know what they're aiming for.
Oh, yeah, and we're agreeable.
Right.
Susan, a quick question. When we get the information back from Ms. Mooney, would that be passed on to council along with our recommendations so that they'd be able to look at that as in their packet to go along with, you know, because, you know, they've got to go through the, all of these line items themselves before they say yea or nay, so...
That's why we had your meeting first so that we could provide your recommendation to...
But we're looking for additional information from Ms. Mooney. I just want to make sure that the council gets that also in their packet.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, asking if that would be included.
Yes, and then we'll follow up with you, your meeting will be the night after the council meeting, so we can give you an update on, on what happened then.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And if you'd like Court, you know, we could certainly, as a follow-up under that last agenda item for discussion of properties in the district, we can provide in the packet a copy of, you know, Courtney's updated review for eligibility of items so that you can see what would have gone to council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, I, thank you so much, Grant, for coming out tonight and Larry.
Thanks for working, yeah, thanks for working for...
We wish you the very best.
Thank you very much. I know this is, it's challenging, but it feels like progress is being made and I appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Grant, thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks, Courtney.
And I think we'll be in touch with you, just to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, all right. Now we're back to public comment. Each person has up to five minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Comments made during the public comment period of the agenda may be on any subject. To comment during the meeting, members of the public may call 702-589-9629 when the public comment period is opened, and it is now opened.